Item five, work session. Item A, budget discussion. So it's budget season again already. General Hampton, good to see you.
Hi, how are you?
The Secretary of State addresses you as General Hampton, then who am I to?
They're gonna queue it up. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The objective of this work session is to present the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020. Hard to believe we're there, but we are. We'll start off with our total revenues, and this includes all funds, not just the general fund and the water sewer operational funds. We're projecting about $79.3 million in total revenue for the coming fiscal year. The largest portion of this revenue, as has been in the past, is taxes. About 38% or $30.3 million. This includes not only our property taxes, but also sales tax revenue, including the half-cent sales tax for streets improvement and Friendswood Downtown Economic Development. It also includes our mixed drinks taxes and also franchise taxes for utilities operating within the city. Our next largest revenue source is about 35% or $27.6 million. For the coming year, this is going to be planned uses of fund balance and retained earnings in several of our funds, including bond proceeds for some capital improvement projects that we'll plan to complete within the next fiscal year. The next largest source of revenue in our proposed budget is charges for services. That is about $16.5 million, and that includes our water and sewer utility fees as well as parks and recreational use fees. The remaining 6% of the revenue projected in the budget includes things like our interest earnings, miscellaneous receipts, building permits, also our court fines and library fines, as well as internal lease payments for vehicle replacements that we're planning for the coming fiscal year, as well as intergovernmental and grant funds. Our total expenditures, again, this is all funds, not just our general and water sewer funds, total about $79.2 million in the coming fiscal year. The largest expenditure category, as I mentioned, is capital improvements. We are expecting to complete several large projects in the next coming year. Most of that is related to the 2018 water and sewer utility bonds that we issued in December of 2018. Our next largest expenditure category is public works. That's about 14.4% or 18.4% of our total expenditures. This includes the personnel as well as operational expenses related to the city's utility systems. It also includes some significant increases in our contracts with the City of Houston for the Southeast Water Purification Plant, as well as the Black Hawk wastewater treatment plant contracts. Our public safety is the next largest expenditure category, about 18%. This is, it includes our police department, as well as our fire marshal's office, emergency management, as well as the contract for Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department. That is also net of the anticipated revenues from EMS billing that we're expecting in the coming year. The next largest expenditure category is our debt service. That's about 11%, and that is principal and interest payments on our existing debt, our existing bonds, on the water sewer revenue bonds, as well as general obligation bonds. General government makes up about $7.3 million of our expenditures, and this includes the city manager's office, city attorney's office, administrative services offices, as well as the city's property insurance and liability insurance. Parks and Recreation also makes up about $3.9 million in the expenditure category. The remaining 4, 4.5% is made up, is consistent of community development, as well as the library, our new engineering department, and the vehicle replacements, our internal lease payments. And if at any time there are questions, please stop me, and we'll address those as we go. Let's focus a little bit on the general fund for a moment. Looking at revenues in the general fund of that $79.3 million in total revenues, about $30 million of that is projected for the general fund. Our property taxes makes up the largest portion of our general fund revenues. That's about 53%, and it's up about $1 million, a little over $1 million, that we're projecting over this current fiscal year. That includes revenues from new construction, and we have actually built the budget this year based on the current tax rate, and so that makes up a little bit of that, the majority of that increase in property tax revenue. Sales taxes are next largest category of revenue in the general fund. That's about $6.6 million, just shy of $7 million. This does not include the half-cent sales tax that is recorded in separate funds for street improvements, as well as the Downtown Economic Development Corporation. So we're expecting revenue in the general fund to be up about $400,000 on sales tax, and that's just based on the trends that we're seeing in our collections this year. So we're carrying that over to next year. Our franchise taxes are expected to be up about $600,000, and that is just, again, based on trends. We also had a rate adjustment on some of our franchise, some of our franchise fees, and so we're projecting that to be a portion of that $600,000 difference there. Our fines and our court fines are expected to increase about $63,000 over the current year, and that's just based on our collection trends and what we're seeing there in this year, and also a historical look at that. Our permit revenue, we're expecting to be up just slightly over what we budgeted for this year. There have been some changes, and we'll touch on that in a future slide, on some legislative changes related to how we charge for building permits. So we'll address that just a little bit later in the presentation. Our intergovernmental revenue, which is our contracts with the, with our memorandums of understanding with the school district are included in our governmental revenue. This is also some grants that we historically have received in the past that we're expecting to receive in the coming fiscal year. So we're expecting just a slight decrease in our intergovernmental revenue for this year, not significant, but that is one that's kind of variable, because it just depends on our grant applications and what we are awarded. So that has a little bit of fluctuation. So our charges for services, again, this is Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation use fees, as well as some services that are provided in our Community Development Department. So we're expecting to see a downward trend in that revenue. We also, in our current year's budget, we had accounted for EMS billing in this line item, and that revenue is actually remitted directly to the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department. So we've backed that out of our revenue projections for the city, because it goes directly there, and we've netted that revenue against the expense for the FVFD contract.
Katina, does that account, then, for most of the $318,000 that's down?
Yes. In our miscellaneous revenue, this includes, we have miscellaneous revenue and interest earnings, cell phone tower agreements in the general fund. We're expecting this to be up about $160,000 for this coming year. We have seen a little bit of an uptick in our interest rates, and so we're accounting for that in that line item. We also have interfund transfers between, from our water and sewer fund, and also a little bit from our Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Fund into the general fund to account for some of the administrative type services that are provided by the general fund to those other two funds. We are also expecting or planned a use of fund balance of almost $500,000 above our 90-day reserve in the general fund for this coming year, and that will be covering capital improvements, mainly the streets improvement program that has been included in the general fund going forward. Take a look at our tax rate. As I mentioned, about 53% of our general fund budget is property taxes. So for this coming year, we are seeing or estimating our net taxable value. We've received certified values from Galveston appraisal, Central Appraisal District, and we have preliminary values from Harris County as of right now. We are estimating our net taxable value to be about $3.6 billion. This is up about $137 million from the current, from tax year 2018. This amount does include the new construction, and it also includes the value of the over 65 freeze ceilings. We are projecting, or the information that we've received from the appraisal district shows about $85 million in new construction that we're expecting to be added to the tax rolls for this coming year, and our tax rate will support our tax debt service obligations for existing general obligation bonds of about $3.3 million for the coming year. As I mentioned, there has been some legislation regarding building permit fees, and Aubrey is here and may be able to speak more to that if you have specific questions about that legislation. In essence, it changes the way that we charge our building permit fees. In the past, we have based our building permits on the value that is, or the estimated value of the structure. And going forward, the legislation is now calling for us to charge based on the square footage of a, of a structure. So that is to, and we've looked at that, and in our revenue estimates, we try to base that fee going forward in a manner that will bring in about the same amount of revenue and be comparable to our neighboring cities. So again, if you have specific questions about that, Aubrey is here and will be able to speak to that.
We have to charge based on a square footage, but they don't tell us what to charge per square foot. They just tell us that you have to not base it on the value, and so you're telling us that you're just gonna set that fee at the level that it brings in the same money that the permits brought in when we were basing them on value.
Correct.
And they didn't mandate square footage? They just said you can't base it on value. So every city's kind of scrambling to, the majority of the cities are going to square footage.
And the logic behind that is there is a cost for the city providing that service. When we review plans and when we send an inspector out to inspect the work that's done, it costs the city money in terms of that, the manpower, staffing, as well as vehicle usage and things like that. So we're trying to offset the impact of the tax rate by charging a fee that's more commensurate with that service provision.
Shifting gears to the general fund expenditures. We have in the proposed budget about $30 million in expenditures of this amount. About 70% of that, or 20.5 million, is personnel-related. In, in the general fund this year, this current fiscal year, we are establishing an engineering department separate of our public works department, so that is reflected in the proposed budget. We've also included employee merit of about 2.75%.
Excuse me, Katina. Does the new engineering department include the cost of the drainage engineer that we wanted?
Yes.
It does, yes.
We are, again, including employee merit at a 2.75% increase. That's at a cost of about $475,000, $476,000 annually. We also have included in the proposed budget a slight pay plan adjustment in the public safety department. It's not expected to cost more than around $5,000 total, so it's a very slight pay plan adjustment. This year, we are not seeing any increase to our health insurance premiums, our health or dental insurance premiums for our staff, and that is directly attributed to successful negotiations of the consortium that the city belongs to, along with the cities of Dickinson and West University Place and Webster. So, I don't think if we had anything else. And non-personnel, on the non-personnel side in the general fund, it's about $9.5 million. This is a net increase of about $834,000 over the previous year. Again, some of that is directly related to the development of the new engineering department. We have also included, looking at our current services budget and just the needs of the, of the departments to operate at the current services level, is reflected there. And as I mentioned, the $500,000 for the street improvement program that council has continued to direct us to include, it's been included in the proposed budget. We also have about $1.7 million in forces at work and decision packages included in the proposed budget, and we'll see that on the next, on the next slide. And it's kind of small, but it does detail, and this is also found on page 293 of your budget document, so if you wanted to get that closely, and the budget is posted to the website for the public to, to view as well. We've included in forces at work about $270,000 in forces at work are included in the budget for this year. A lot of those are IT-related, just to, we're having to add a public works software, our public works module, work orders, and, and, and we also have some other operating systems related to IT. So it's really just to keep our systems operating, and also security cameras, a security camera replacement or upgrade in several areas of the city are included in that. And then on the decision package side, a lot of those, or most of them, are funded by an outside funding source, either PEG funds for some of the, some of the items that are directly related to fiber replacement, cabling, and just for programming, enhancing the programming of our PEG channel, so that we can use our PEG fund reserves for that. And we are also looking to do some lease-to-purchase on some heavy equipment that's not included in the city's vehicle replacement plan. We also have, and we'll discuss this a little bit further in the presentation, we've got a list of the unfunded decision packages in the general fund and the water sewer side, so those will be coming up just shortly. We'll talk water and sewer funds for a little bit. We typically try to cover in this presentation the operational funds. The other funds, city has, I think, about 21 funds total separate, and those usually are self-funding, so it's, what's brought in is what's expended in those. So we generally refer in this presentation to the general fund and the water sewer operating fund. So in our water sewer fund, we're projecting revenues of $19.7 million. As you can see, about $15.5 million of that is directly related to our water and sewer revenue fees, our water sewer use fees, and then we have some administrative fees that are related to disconnections, reconnections of, for non-payment, and same-day service connections, and those types of things. We also have a little bit of revenue in water meter sales, and those are usually directly related to new home development or new commercial developments. We have a little bit of interest in the water sewer fund interest earnings of about $114,000, and we're anticipating a use of water sewer working capital in the water sewer fund of about $3.6 million to cover some capital improvements at the Southeast Water Purification Plant.
Katina, we raised rates on water. What have you seen as far as the revenue from our raising the rates on our citizens?
We actually, we've not received the phone calls that we had expected to see, and the billings actually have not been a significant increase to the average user. So we are seeing a...
Are we getting the revenue that you anticipated that we would get, or are we not getting it?
We have, and by actually adopting the rates a little bit later in the year than we had anticipated, and we actually billed two months in arrears, so we are just now starting to see a trend, and there is an increase, like an uptick in the revenue, so we are expecting that to continue. And according to the utility rate study that was done this past year, we are anticipating, and we've built into the budget, the next, the year-two increase. So we're expecting to see that in January of this coming fiscal year. So each year of the five-year planning window was an increase in utility rates to cover the capital projects that are related to the utility systems, as well as anticipated debt service obligations.
There's been some adjustment in the amount of water consumed by our residents due to, one, the amount of rain we've had intermittently throughout the summer months, which is our heaviest-use months, as well as some folks have curbed their usage based upon the increase in rates. So it hasn't spiked as what we, what we'd have anticipated.
Mo, a quick question on our public works expenditures of, say, $14,545,000. That, this might be a timing question, but we issued those bonds for the $12 million for the new 42-inch line. Is that going to be expended in 2019, 2020 budget? Do we have a timing on some of that? Because I know we have retained earnings now in the budget of somewhere $26 million of retained budget, earnings in the budget. So when is that money gonna be spent?
So $2.5 million of it was scheduled to be spent in year one. That $26, $27 million is retained earnings plus the capital from those, the bond issuance itself, so it's not just retained earnings. It's a combination of all of that.
Right.
But it's gonna be expended in the next three to four years, if I remember the...
Yes. So that's why it's being held, correct?
Yes, sir. Let's move to water sewer fund expenditures, totaling about $19.7 million. Yes, $19.7 million. The water sewer fund has the opposite makeup on expenditure size as the general fund, where general fund is about 70% personnel and about 30% non-personnel. Water sewer is almost the opposite, the exact opposite, where the non-personnel expenditures are the largest portion of the water sewer fund expenditures. On the personnel side, we have about $2.6 million there, and that covers the, a portion of the engineering department. That department will actually have employees that are coded to water sewer fund, and some of the employees will, expenditures or their salary and benefits will be coded to the general fund, and that's just the break in, in the functionality of those, those positions. We, just like on the general fund, we've included 2.75% merit for the employees that are paid out of the water sewer fund. This is gonna be about $58,000 on the water sewer side, and again, no health insurance or dental insurance premium increases will be seen. On the non-personnel side, we've got about $17.1 million estimated expenditures in the proposed budget, debt service obligations of about $5.8 million on the water sewer side. And again, these are related to the, mainly related to the 2018 revenue bonds, and it's now time to start paying those principal and interest payments on that. We are seeing a net increase of, in the non-personnel of about $6.7 million, and again, that's, a part of that is related to some contractual obligations that we're seeing increases there. And we're also, it's based on our current services. Departments scrubbed the budget, looked for savings where they could, and increases where we had to. We have included in the water sewer fund about $300,000 for sewer maintenance program. Again, our debt service obligation's about $5.8 million, and we have forces at work and decision packages on the water sewer side. We'll see a slide next that will detail that of about $5.3 million.
One question, Katina. I know we've been cleaning out the sewers, just because debris and what have you after Hurricane Harvey. Where does that show up in here? Is that one of the increases that we're seeing?
We actually, we actually have an ongoing sewer maintenance line item in our budget. That's the $300,000 that's reflected here on the screen, but...
And that $300,000 is for sanitary sewer cleaning? The storm sewer cleaning is what you're referencing, and that was funded out of fund balance above the 90-day reserve?
Again, a listing of the forces at work and the decision packages included in the proposed budget. Again, this can be found on page 293 of your budget document. We also have one decision package identified, and that's a vacuum jet combination sewer truck. It's not included in our vehicle replacement plan, so we're expecting to do a capital lease to purchase on that item. This is our list of...
Sorry, would you remind me again, the forces at work are not in the budget?
Forces at work are included in the budget. Our forces at work are items that are either regulatory, or it's something that has to be done to, or has to be completed in order for us to maintain operations.
And the decision packages were also, those are the ones that were funded?
These are the ones that were funded, yes, ma'am. The next couple of slides will show the unfunded decision packages in the general fund, as well as the water sewer fund. As you can see, our list is pretty extensive. We had about $1.4 million that was, that was submitted by the departments as needs, but we did not have the funding available to do that. When we go through our decision packages, the department, our process is that departments will submit what their needs are, and our budget team actually reviews those, those items, and we go through it as a group, we rank them, and based on the funding availability is how those are included in the proposed budget. So these are the items that did not make the list, and this can be found on page 294 of your budget document.
And this may be more of a Mo question than Katina message, or question, but I know previously each of the departments self-vet, and then the department heads self-vet. Is that still the process you go through in order to decide what's an unfunded decision package, which is not?
Correct. They'll, each department head has an opportunity to present their decision package to the remainder of the budget team and sort of sell and defend each item. Afterwards, the department heads leave, and they rank all items but their own, and then it develops a priority list. Whether or not an item's funded, though, is dependent on what the revenues we anticipate from the tax rate and other charges for services, to whether or not something gets funded, is based off of revenues versus expenditures. It's not based on, prioritization is laid side by side to that funding line.
They've each had the opportunity to make their case to their peers.
Correct. And I must say, this has been the most collaborative organization I've ever worked for in that manner, but it definitely brings out some level of, some buy-in from the team by doing this approach, because everyone feels that they have a fair, fair stake in this.
I like that process. Thank you for continuing.
Like previous years, we'll get an opportunity to maybe discuss whether we want any of these included, correct?
That is correct.
Be upset if you decide to fund all of these.
We have, and we do have the tax rate equivalent available.
It kind of looks like it grows larger each year. And that's not intentional. Each year, there are a number of items that are not funded, and so things just get carried on to the next year. And it's, it's not as if services would cease to operate if these items are not funded, but definitely would improve the service level that you're, that we're offering.
And in case, we did, we do each year with our unfunded decision packages, we have the tax rate equivalent available. If you would like that information, we can provide it for how much in tax rate each of these items would cost. This is our list on the water sewer side of the unfunded decision packages. As you can see, again, about $800,000 in items that were not included. Again, same reason as the general fund. These are vetted exactly as those in the general fund, so, and based on funding availability and the team's ranking, this, these are the ones that were not funded this year. Our next steps, that's the end of the presentation, per se, but we do have some key dates that we'd like to keep in the forefront of everyone's mind. Our proposed budget was delivered to council by city charter prior to our August 1st deadline. The budget work session is this evening, so any information that council would like to share, direction that you would like to give us, we're happy to receive that. We also will have a budget, a hearing, a public hearing on our proposed budget based on our charter requirements. We're scheduling that for our September council meeting. And then, because we are proposing the current tax rate in anticipation that that will be slightly above the effective tax rate, we would need to have two public hearings. That's required by, by state regulations, and then our hope is to adopt our proposed budget and tax rate on October 7th, so. And again, we welcome your input. We thank you for your support always, and my, my staff and I always say that we can't do what we do without the help of our budget team, city manager's support, so, and council's direction, so we thank y'all all.
Good job, Katina.
Are there any comments, discussion?
I noticed on the unfunded, was the pool staff salary increases? Will they get the same as everybody else? Was this over and above?
It's actually, those salaries would be funded by an outside funding source, meaning the service, the, the use fees. So that's how those would be, would be funded. I'm sorry, pool staff, about the pool. I was thinking summer camp. Summer camp, I'm sorry.
Summer camp, I saw a weather in there. But the pool staff was on the unfunded list.
That's the way that it ranked, and there's not use fees for that. There's not use fees to cover that.
Are they city employees?
They're seasonal employees, yes.
They're seasonal city employees.
Okay, summer.
On, summer, summer day camp has a revenue stream associated with it, the registration cost associated with kids that go to the summer day camp program, and so we can adjust those fees to cover the cost of the increase there. On the pool, we're not quite there yet, but we can look at alternatives.
Just real quickly, what would the effective tax rate, number B, if we were to adopt the effective tax rate? And how much of an increase in revenues does this give us on a percentage basis?
We are estimating, based on the values that we've received, the estimated effective tax rate will be around fifty-one point twenty-four cents, and we're proposing the current rate, which is fifty-three point twenty-four. So it's a two cent difference, so around.
So on a, on a thirty million dollar general fund budget, it's two percent?
Two percent increase?
Yes.
Anything else? All right. Rod, do you have anything else?
No, sir. We'll continue to move on as presented. Obviously, the, the budget is set to be adopted before October one, so we'll have multiple meetings between now and October first. If there's any questions, as you all are reading that several hundred-page document, feel free to contact us, and we can visit further on any direction you all have.